I'd like to call to order the February 20th, 2018, regular meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners and invite you to stand if you choose and offer the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Father, we thank you for another wonderful day in our community. Thank you for Bowling Green and all its residents. We pray that you'll guide us as we consider what's presented to us this evening and make the decision that most glorifies you. In Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissar Nash?
Here.
Commissioner Paragon?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Denny?
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Here. The first item on our agenda is a public hearing, and the purpose of which to receive comments for housing community development needs in Bowling Green for year 15, Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Program and review of eligible activities and past investments. Mr. Childers?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, honored to be before you today covering for a colleague who had to step away unexpectedly this afternoon, so I'll be covering tonight's public hearing. Let everyone know that there are some sign-in sheets going around. I asked that everyone sign in, so we do have a record of attendance. If Ms. Shaller Ward would turn on the screens, please. So we'll get into this. So this is our FY '19 Annual Action Plan. We have to do an annual action plan every year for HUD. We have to do a consolidated plan every five years, and this is actually the last year of our current consolidated plan, so in the fall, we'll start writing a new consolidated plan to set the priorities. So every project that we do must be a part of our annual action plan. It must meet one of these three national objectives: benefit to low-to-moderate income persons, prevention/elimination of slum and blight, and urgent community need. Almost, I'd say, every project that we do falls under category one, benefit to low-to-moderate income persons. Apologies. So this process started with a pub... comment period on February 9th through March 11th, a public hearing here tonight, and then we'll begin drafting the plan. We'll have another public comment period once the plan is drafted, and another public hearing in April to talk about what projects we're going to do as part of next year's annual action plan. So the way this will work is after we have that public hearing, we'll come back to the City Commission on May 1st for approval of that plan, then we submit it to HUD. They have 45 days to review it, so our plan year starts July 1, and we'll start our environmental review and other things we have to do before we can start implementing the plan and actually turning dirt, doing type... doing projects. So here's a couple of pictures of some previously funded activities. A picture on the left is a house that was built in Durbin Estates through a partnership with Habitat for Humanity a couple of years ago. We did not pay for the construction of the house. We paid for the installation of infrastructure that made the lot available so that Habitat could build a house on. So that's an activity that we did to support housing in the BG reinvestment area. The other one is part of our Neighborhood Improvements Program. This is a new sidewalk that was built along with the Josephine Sidewalk Project, so that's a project that finished up about a year ago. You all have heard us talk about many times during this public hearings, we have what's called a BG reinvestment area, and that's where we dedicate 80% of our CDBG funding to investments in this area. We take one neighborhood at a time and really target what is that area, spend a couple of years in that area making those improvements. We're finishing up in 105-2, which is roughly this area, would be about Fairview to 14th. So we're... Reservoir Hill Park is about done. If you've been by there to see the new wall, the roof's on the transit shelter, the new walkways, accessibility... accessible parking, accessible entry into the picnic shelter, the new patio, some of those improvements. That's really nearing completion, and we've also got our private property improvements program. It's a lot of P's. Finishing up there, we've got about 15 to 20 houses left for that. We've already started moving into 112, so we're kind of transitioning from 105-2, moving into 112, which is roughly Old Baron River Road to Old Morgantown Road, Norview West to the city limits. 112, we've already let the bid for and awarded the contract to Scotty's for 6,000 linear feet of six-foot wide asphalt paths in Lampkin Park. We're waiting on acquisition for new sidewalks. We'll be investing approximately 10,000 feet of pedestrian pathways in 112 as part of this project. We've awarded Live the Dream a contract for an extra rehab program similar to our private property improvements program, and then tomorrow, we'll be opening bids of responses, not bids, responses, for new housing opportunities in 112. So we're moving forward with investments in 112, so a lot of emphasis in this year's plan will be on 112 and what projects we plan to take on in 112. I'll be back up in just a minute to talk more about opportunities that we've been recently made aware of in the BG reinvestment area, so I'd ask you to kind of picture this area. Whenever I come back up, there'll be a little bit different map to look at, but this is where our strategy area is that's been adopted by HUD of how we want to invest funds moving forward over a very long-term approach and making long-term investments in these neighborhoods. So our anticipated funding level for next fiscal year is $534,000. That number could go up, that number could go down. That's all dependent on the formulas by HUD and also what Congress does. So, you know, we're just waiting to see on a lot of that. So right now is the comment period, so you can submit comments to Nick Cook by March 11th. He can take those in writing by mail or by email, and then we'll be posting the plan on the website once we have it drafted during the next comment period, starting late March, early April. And with that, I'll open it up for any comments or questions from the commission before we open it up to the body.
Questions from it? Public comments section because this is a public hearing with regard to the Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Program. Is anyone in the audience that would like to address the commission with regard to those specifications? Seeing none, well, thank you, Mr. Childers, and close that part of the public hearing. Next item is awards and recognitions. Do you have some, Mr.? Anyone on the commission? Mr. Harden, Dr. Harden, is this your point? Dr. Long? Good evening, Dr. Long. Thanks for coming. What do you have for us tonight?
Mayor Wilkinson. Pardon me, well, gerson to make a precise pronunciation and forgive my voice. It's that time of the year. Commissioners of the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, City Manager DeFebbe, and all members of staff and other persons present. Having served as the initial chair of the Board of Directors of the African-American Museum Bowling Green Area, I've been granted the honor of representing the board on this special occasion, which is the much-deserved recognition of our City Manager of Bowling Green, Mr. Kevin DeFebbe. Mr. DeFebbe. That we, Mr. DeFebbe and I, share in common an upbringing in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, albeit we are from opposite ends of that Commonwealth. He from the Far West, Pittsburgh, and I from the Far East, Philadelphia, and we each are fans of three opposing sports franchises. He is supporter of the Pirates, the Steelers, and the Penguins; I of the Phillies, the Eagles, and the Flyers. Even so, it is good to honor a fellow transplanted Pennsylvanian. I am privileged to present to you this plaque that we have. It is in appreciation for all that you have done and have continued to do to bring to birth, to nurture, and to advance the growth of the African-American Museum in Bowling Green. The inscription reads, "The African-American Museum Board of Directors sincerely appreciates and acknowledges the support and guidance of Kevin DeFebbe in preserving the history of African-Americans in the Bowling Green area.
Grip and grin. Thank you so much, Dr. Long, and we do have the information that you brought to us. Thank you so much for bringing us up to date with that. Thank you, and thank you for being here tonight. Keep up the good work. Any other award and recognitions? Do you have any comments tonight, sir?
I have two items. The first is Brent is going to talk about an opportunity that we might want to take advantage of to help improve our community, and the second is I'd like to make some personal comments. Brent?
Thank you. Mayor Commissioners, get this thing adjusted, right? Mr. City Manager, that is not one I need. Here we go. So just a few minutes ago, I asked you to kind of imprint the map of the BG reinvestment area in your mind, that I'd be back to talk to you. So we just were made aware... Yeah, the lines aren't very thick. I apologize for that. We were just made aware last week of a new opportunity that we felt like we needed to capitalize on. With the recent tax law changes at the congressional level, there's a new structure been put in place called an opportunity zone. And opportunity zones are... have to be qualified based on income limits of certain areas, and they are based on census tracts. So since we have focused so much on the BG reinvestment area, we did want to take advantage of this opportunity, submit requests for information back to the state ED cabinet, who's handling that, and we do not get to say we are an opportunity zone. We get to request to be added to the list, and the governor's office gets to decide who is an opportunity zone. And you might ask, well, okay, what's an opportunity zone? And these have been called different things over the years, and what they are is there are certain tax advantages for people who invest in dedicated opportunity zones. One of the goals of the BG reinvestment area has been to create economic opportunities for low-income persons. So we felt like this gives us another tool to try to create better job opportunities, better economic opportunities in these low-income areas where we see the highest concentration of low-income, the highest concentration of older housing stock, the highest concentration of substandard, the highest concentration of minorities, and the highest concentration of female head of households. And so what we wanted to do is, and our recommendation, is to focus in on that BG reinvestment area where we already have a HUD-recognized neighborhood revitalization strategy area where there's already things going on. We've got the Brownfield Program now focusing in on that area, but we're doing it a little different. Since these are based on census tracts and the entire tract has to be considered, we're recommending 101, 102, 103, 104, 105. That would exclude the city portion of 112 that I just talked about a while ago because 112 actually extends well out into the county. So we would... it would be a joint partnership, and with the amount of time, we didn't want to include that. We really wanted to focus in on the areas that were all within the city. All five of those census tracts are within the city limits of Bowling Green, so we have the authority to say, yes, we want to be these included. We also have a small portion of 113 that is in the BG reinvestment area, which is primarily the Housing Authority offices, that little section right there, Richardsville Road, Sugar Maple Square, that little section. But 113 actually wraps all the way back around to the river at Old Lower Road, all the way out through Plum Springs. It's a very large census tract, and since it's all based on census tract, then we're kind of left to pick where should we go. So we want... our recommendation is to pick 101, 102, 103, 104, 105. Those are all within the city limits. Those are all within our BG reinvestment area, and we will be submitting, and with your permission, we'd be submitting that to the state. Nick has already started work on that. I've got to pull some maps together about what those... what that area looks like to give us another tool to foster new investment, new development, new economic opportunities in this BG reinvestment area. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Questions?
I'm just wondering, what is the sort of the incentive that the state is going to give?
So, not being a tax professional, I don't want to try to give tax advice, but the best way I can understand it is it allows you to defer a tax liability if you take taxable income and invested in this opportunity zone. The longer you leave that investment in the opportunity zone, then the more that tax deferment is taken away. So best example I could think of is you make an investment somewhere, and there is a large capital gain tied to that, and you don't want to... you want to try to cover some of the tax liability as best you can. You can take that gain, invest it in a dedicated opportunity zone or an opportunity fund, and let's say that's new housing. Maybe that's new job opportunities. Then you get to reduce that tax liability over time, up to 10 years, to reduce that tax liability. So whereas you might have had a high tax liability on that initial gain, you've been able to reinvest that in one of these qualified areas, and then you're reducing that liability the longer you hold that investment in this opportunity fund, in this opportunity zone. So it's another tool for us to talk to developers. It's another tool to say, hey, you know, there's advantages for investing in this neighborhood of building new housing opportunities, of starting new businesses, that it gives us another tool. And like I said, we don't get to pick them. All we're saying is we want to be on the list. Please consider us. And that's what this is. It's really up to the governor's office to make the determination. They have some limits of how many they can say are based on the total number of census tracts in their state. Wonderful question. I hope I answered it the best I can.
Any of those census tract extend over the river?
No, these are all within the river. If I kind of zoom up a little bit more, they run into it right here. You can see right here, this is pretty much the Housing Authority property, not the offices. And then it touches back here on the river down around Boat Landing, this Power Street-Hopson area. So they touch the river right there, and that's where the city limits are also. So we wanted to keep them within our jurisdictional boundaries.
Comment or question? Excuse me, I'm going forward with it. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you working for us on that. You're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Ben Franklin once said, "Even guests like fish, if they hang around too long, start to smell." Two months ago, I announced my retirement, and tonight is my last meeting, and it is time for me to go unless I want to fulfill Mr. Franklin's prophecy. Just out of curiosity, tonight is my 500th City of Bowling Green meeting. And that also means that these people are here. I've also attended 500, and Chris Davenport, you're close. You've got a couple more years left. Couple of my department heads and I were chatting, and we figured out I've had 1,400 meetings in my career, all of which my greatest fear was that I would drop a pencil on the ground and say something that was not nice. But luckily, I've been made... I made it through. Hopefully, tonight I will, too. I did want to thank publicly everyone who has sent me cards and wished me well. It's touched me in many ways, and there are for many people I didn't even know, which made it even more special. If we've had any success over the last 12 years, I only played a part. I think our success as a community starts with our partnership, and the most important one is our partnership with our 500 full-time employees and our part-time employees. After all, it's the employees who do the work. I just help direct that, but it's the employees who do the work, and our senior managers and department heads that manage them. And I think I feel proud that our department head have adopted the thought of wanting to be the best city in Kentucky, and have also adopted the idea of trying to provide the best services at the lowest possible cost. I think that's what we're here for, to provide the best service at the lowest cost. In addition to the employees, the people at the dais are responsible for our success. And the 11 commissioners and three mayors I have worked with, these same people attended the 500 meetings that I talked about. Not this group, but a group over a 12-year period, many of them were part of that. If you think it's hard being a city manager, be an elected official. An elected official's job is much more difficult than a person who's appointed like me. I get paid well for doing this job. They have... they don't get paid well, and they have to attend many meetings, and they have to do the most difficult thing possible. They have to listen to everybody's needs, and they can't fulfill them all. And the hardest thing to do is say no. And in the political life, it's very difficult. I also wanted to say that I believe that our success as a city also relates to the fact that we've had a city manager system since 1968. Whoever had the wisdom to do that... this is not a political statement, but I've been the city manager for 35 years. I personally think it's one of the best systems, because it frees the city commission to take care of the people, their needs, and to listen to them. And it's an evolutionary process. I want to thank Chuck Coates, for example, for establishing the foundation that I was able to adopt, that he had laid. If I did anything, I improved upon what was already planted as seeds, so others have started the system way, way before I did. Finally, I'd like to thank the people of Bowling Green. As Doc said, I'm not from here. That was the first question we heard. Where are you from? Not from here. Actually, I'm from West Virginia, close to Pittsburgh, as we would say, and I want to thank the people for being so gracious, and I look at being your city manager as one of the singular professional achievements of my life, and I want to thank the people for that opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's do the people's work.
Can I make an announcement?
There are seats up front for anybody who's having to stand or sit on the floor. You can choose to do that if you don't want to. There are seats up front.
First item is approval of minutes from a regular meeting on February 6, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Paragon. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? Please call a roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance BG 2018, number seven.
Ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing 4.3658 acres from ERE residential estate and F floodplain to RM4 multifamily residential and F floodplain located on Old Scottsville Road presently owned by MFG Bowling Green Land LLC.
So moved.
Second.
By Paragon, second by Williams. I don't know if there's any further discussion, but just a reminder that we... before we can consider the second item on our agenda, we have to close out the first item. First, we had discussion and presentations from both attorneys and individuals. We've read the record. Last time, this one failed to pass 3-2, so unless there's any further discussion, we will call a roll, and a yes vote is to affirm the recommendation to rezone the property. So last time, I think Sue and I voted yes, and the remainder voted no. Please call a roll.
Ash?
No.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
No.
Denny?
No.
Wilkerson?
Yes. The reading fails, and we move into the first reading of BG 2018, number nine.
Ordinance denying rezoning of real estate, ordinance rejecting recommendation of the City-City Planning Commission and denying rezoning tracts of land containing 4.3658 acres from RE residential estate and F floodplain to RM4 multifamily residential and F floodplain located on Old Scottsville Road presently owned by MFG Bowling Green Land LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Nash, second by Williams. If there's any further discussion regarding that, I think we... the motion is on the floor, and there's some findings that need to be read into the record, although they are in the ordinance that is presented.
I have made the following motion to deny based upon reviewing all of the available information related to this rezoning, including the summary of evidence presented at the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners, the testimony before the Planning Commission, and arguments made before the Board of Commissioners, the packet provided by the Planning Commission, the summary minutes and binding elements. The Board of Commissioners hereby rejects the recommendation of the Planning Commission and denies the application to rezone the subject real estate based on the following facts and conditions. A, the Board of Commissioners agrees with the Planning Commission that the proposed future land use map amendment has not met the directive to amend the flume as outlined in LU-1 dot 14 of the comprehensive plan. And B, the Board of Commissioners disagrees with the Planning Commission that there have been major changes of an economic, physical, or social nature within the Old Scottsville Road area which were not anticipated in the adopted comprehensive plan and which have substantially altered the basic character of the Old Scottsville Road area. And C, the Board of Commissioners finds that while there have been no changes involving commercial and residential developments along Cumberland Trace Road, those commercial and residential changes are limited to the Cumberland Trace Road area and were anticipated in the comprehensive plan. And finally, D, the Board of Commissioners further finds that there have been... have not been any major changes of an economic, physical, or social nature which were anticipated in the adopted comprehensive plan and which have substantially altered the basic character of the Old Scottsville Road area, and that that area remains as low-density... remains a low-density residential area.
Any further comments or questions regarding that? Again, this is the mirror image or the opposite of what we just failed to approve, so a yes vote here is to say that there will be no rezoning. Voting yes is a denial. Got that? Nope. Okay, this... beg pardon. This one, because of state law, we have to do things in a certain format and fashion. We have to do it by an ordinance, and because we do an ordinance, we have to vote twice. The first motion or the first ordinance was a vote to approve the rezoning, and a yes vote on that ordinance was to approve it. Since it failed, we now have to construct and prepare and present a second ordinance which denies the planning and zoning recommendation. present a second ordinance which denies the planning and zoning recommendation to have it rezoned. So a yes vote here is actually a denial of the rezoning. So since I voted yes, the last time, my vote will be no this time. And presuming your votes won't change, your votes will be no. Just make sure everybody's on the same page.
And may I remind you, this just be the first reading. This ordinance will come back in two weeks.
Do it again.
All right.
I got to say all that again next time?
That's in the record. Anything else? Please call or roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
No.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
No.
Zoning has been denied for Scottsville Road area. And I know there's people here that were just here for that and would allow you an opportunity to slip out if you choose to do so at this time. All right. Next item is municipal order two thousand eighteen twenty-five.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting three bids for the purchase of a rescue engine, bid number two thousand eighteen thirty-three, four fire engines, bid number two thousand eighteen thirty-four, and a mid-mount aerial platform, bid number two thousand eighteen thirty-five for, from fire, from Finley Fire Equipment Company Incorporated of McConnellsville, Ohio, in the total amount of three million six hundred fifty-one thousand twenty-one dollars, and further authorizing the trade-in of two fire engines at a value of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Paragon, second by Nash. Mr. DeFabo?
Thank you, Mayor. During our more difficult times back in two oh eight, nine, and ten, the city wasn't able to purchase much-needed equipment. And one of those areas was firefighting apparatus. We're here tonight hopefully to make up for the need that's been there for quite a while, to help articulate that need and to talk about the bidding platform. Jason Coulson's going to make a presentation to you. And finally, we would like to look at the issue of financing and paying for these as a separate issue that can be handled in a future meeting. But Jason, you want to talk about the purchase and what we need and what we're getting?
Absolutely. Mr. DeFabo, Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to discuss apparatus needs for the fire department. As you might imagine, fire trucks are quite critical in the delivery of our operations. To give you a background on fleet replacement and those types of things, we coordinate with fleet management and establish replacement schedules for our fire apparatus. And we evaluate and update those annually. Generally, the criteria for replacement of fire apparatus is twenty years or a hundred thousand miles. But other factors are considered during evaluation such as engine hours, maintenance and repair costs, availability of parts, and quite simply reliability of our apparatus. But commonly, we've seen that apparatus remain in frontline service for twelve to fifteen years and then move to reserve status for us for an additional five to eight years. So this is a, you know, I wanted to paint the picture that this is a twenty-year piece of equipment if those things hold true. After the fleet evaluation last year, it was determined that the department is in need of multiple apparatus, which is obviously before you for consideration this evening. That includes a rescue engine, multiple fire engines, and a mid-mount aerial platform, AKA ladder truck. And if Katie will turn the screen on, I've got some nice pretty pictures to show you what we're talking about. The top left is the, it will be, is not the exact replica of the rescue engine, but that's the rescue engine. Essentially, the rescue engine and the fire engine are the same, other than the rescue engine has more compartmentation to accommodate the department's rescue, rescue equipment, swift water, structural collapse, and those types of things. Again, and the ladder truck is on the, on the bottom of the screen. It's a ninety-five-foot ladder truck. You might see that we're considering a different color scheme for our apparatus. We figure it's time for a new look, new logo. We, it was the consensus of the department to go with the black over red with our new apparatus. So we'll have a new look and to blend our logo in with our apparatus look. We did form an apparatus committee and they established specifications for each type of apparatus, as you see. A request for bids were sent back, sent out back in November. And our established award criteria was fifty percent price, forty percent ability to meet specifications, and we utilized references for ten percent of our evaluation. We received four bids for each of the rescue engine and the fire engine, and then we received five bids for the mid-mount platform. After evaluating each of the bid packages, Finley Fire Equipment of McConnellsville, Ohio was identified as the best evaluated offer for all three bids. With that, based on current and FY nineteen needs, I'm requesting the purchase of one rescue engine, four fire engines, and one mid-mount aerial platform manufactured by Pierce Manufacturing of Appleton, Wisconsin from Finley Fire Equipment. Additionally, I would like to request acceptance of the trade-in proposal for two of our fire engines. Your approval of this purchase will significantly improve the dependability of both our frontline and our reserve apparatus. This will allow us to remove three existing reserve apparatus that are in excess of twenty years old. We will then move existing frontline apparatus into their place in our reserve fleet. This will also allow us to trade in two apparatus that fleet management is recommending to remove from our fleet. And of course, we'll have six new frontline apparatus approximately ten to eleven months from now. The Fire Improvement Fund will support this purchase while maintaining adequate reserves. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. And I believe Jeff is prepared to answer any financial questions you might have related to this matter. Comment your questions.
How long will it take to get the equipment in?
It'll take approximately ten to eleven months for them to, these are custom-built, so it'll take about eleven months before we see them. Hopefully, it'll be, you know, maybe a Christmas present. I'm not quite sure.
The public's information, this is a very expensive expenditure, fire trucks, they don't call them fire trucks, they, fire apparatus. Everything is custom-built because of the different nature of every different fire department and their needs, where they locate, how they, how they're stored. You just can't go to the fire truck store and say, I'll take the red one. Everything is custom-built for specific engines, tire size, length of ladders, length of truck to fit in whatever garage it is available. So it's, it's an expensive venture. We try to provide best equipment for you that we can.
What will happen to the ones that we are taking out of service?
Three of those, we plan to place on GOV deals. Two of them, we anticipate trading in when the new, new apparatus arrive. And then some of the frontline apparatus will move to reserve fleet.
Else? Please call or roll. Oh, excuse me. Jeff, did you have anything you want to make a comment about?
We'll be looking at some options on the financing in the next week or so. The Fire Improvement Fund does cover any and all equipment expenditures, fire station debt, and that fund brings in about two point two million dollars a year now from the fire insurance premium tax. So we're going to look and see what we can do, but we will not overtax that fund with any kind of heavy financial burden. But we're going to look at some other options to see what's possible. And we'll be bringing that back to you in a few weeks. We will front the, the extra hundred, we're going to front the whole thing as a prepayment to get the discounts. And we thought that extra truck was a good deal too, so we went ahead and threw that in there. But we're going to pay the full thing. And then when Jason gets his trucks, we'll get the trade-in money. So we're going to just take that directly out of cash in the Fire Improvement Fund. And then when we get the new trucks in and they pay us that trade-in value, we'll deposit that money right back out, back into the Fire Improvement Fund. And we'll net, the net will be what we, we figure out what we're going to finance with. So that's the plan. But we'll bring that back to you in the next meeting or so.
And the money we receive for selling the apparatus on GOV deals, that'll go back there too.
Plan to put that in Fire Improvement Fund too as well for future needs.
Comment your questions. Please call or roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order two thousand eighteen twenty-six.
Municipal order authorizing renewal of bid number two thousand seventeen thirty-seven for uniforms for the Police Department from C M S Uniforms and Equipment Company Incorporated of Nashville, Tennessee, Galls LLC of Lexington, Kentucky, and Nats Outdoor Sports of Bowling Green, Kentucky.
So moved.
Second.
Nash, second by Williams. Mr. DeFabo?
Katie said this is a renewal of an existing bid we had for clothing and equipment for the Police Department with one change. Bluegrass is no longer in business, so the equipment and clothing that was, that was provided by them will go to the other three companies. Doug here, if you would like a direct accounting of each item, that will go to the new agencies. But it won't cost us anymore and it will be what we need.
Comment your questions. Please call or roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order two thousand eighteen twenty-seven.
Municipal order authorizing a change order to the contract with Bowling Green Municipal Utilities for the relocation of utilities for Small House Road Improvements Phase One in the amount of sixteen thousand one hundred twenty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents for a total project cost of forty-eight thousand one hundred twenty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents.
So moved. Paragon, second by Nash.
Knowing how much you all like roads, I'd like for Greg to come up and give an overview of this minor change order and what's going on with Small House Road Improvements Phase One and maybe what we're doing on Phase Two. Greg?
Mr. DeFabo, Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. This, this particular change order is resulting from moving two additional poles that weren't set up in the original utility relocation phase of Small House Road, the part that's currently built. One of the poles was, as you can see in one of the displays, was adjacent to the retaining wall at Living Hope Church. There wasn't enough room, even though we were hoping before the project was built that we could fit the sidewalk in and prevent having to spend that money on relocation. But we had to ultimately. The second pole that's listed in this change order is the one at the end of the project that we moved to extend the project so we wouldn't have to disrupt property owners more than once and so that we don't have to, to involve B G M U Electric in the second phase of the Small House project reconstruction and widening. As Mr. DeFabo said, the Phase Two is in the works. The utility companies have been out and marked their utilities. Atmos Gas is in the process of beginning relocation. So within the next two to three weeks, you'll probably see some, some digging in the ground where we've negotiated with several of the property owners. We, we still have about half of those to secure in terms of right-of-way permanent easement, temporary easements for runoff and for drainage. So the project's moving efficiently, we hope by the, by the summer to be to the point where we can actually let it to construction and begin to widen that portion of Small House.
Comment your questions. Call or roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order two thousand eighteen twenty-eight.
Municipal order authorizing and approving the agent fee disclosure statement through non-competitive negotiations with Houchens Insurance Group Incorporated in the total amount of sixty-eight thousand dollars.
Second.
Nash, second by Paragon. Mr. DeFabo?
Thank you. I would ask Dave Rice brought to come forward to give a brief explanation of what this is and why we're doing it. David?
Safety Day. Come on up. Mayor of Commission, for the past twenty-plus years, we have, the city has received property and casualty brokerage services on a, on a commission basis. Basically, what we've done this year is we've renegotiated some of the services that are being provided and now we'll be paying on a, on a fee basis. And for that, we're requesting commissions approval to award it to H G I, Houchens Group, or H I G, Houchens Insurance Group for that, for that process.
Comment your questions. Roll. Thank you, sir. Please call or roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order two thousand eighteen twenty-nine.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of a two thousand eighteen grant application to the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation for an emergency inflatable shelter in the amount up to twenty thousand one hundred eighty-five dollars.
So moved.
Thank you, Mayor. Fighting a fire is not always a quick, put water on it and leave. Sometime it takes a great bit of time involving danger to our firemen and discomfort from wet clothes and cold. We're here tonight to ask you to allow us apply for about twenty thousand dollar grant from Firehouse Subs to buy an inflatable shower, shelter that will be used during significant fire events to allow us to help our firemen take care of their, some of their personal needs. Jason is here. If you have any questions?
Comment your questions. Call or roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG two thousand eighteen, number ten.
Ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing three point two seven acres from R S one A single-family residential to R M three multifamily residential located at ten eleven Campbell Lane and the end of Mohawk Drive, presently owned by Thirty Four Properties LLC and Harlan Gray Investments LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Paragon, second by Williams. This is a recommendation from the Planning Commission on the seven to one vote. Mr. Davenport, did you have any comments that you wish to add this evening?
Very briefly, Mayor, thank you, Commissioners. Chris Davenport, I'm here with my client, Matt Simpson, who's the principal of the two companies that own the property. Just a few very quick points. As the mayor pointed out, this was a seven to one recommendation. The recommendation and the request made of the Planning Commission was compliant with the future land use map, which is, I think, always a very important point to make here. It is for thirty-two two-story brick townhomes with attached garages. What we think will be a very nice development, both as far as its size and its components, the development will have fifty percent green space, another very desirable aspect of the development. There was opposition at the hearing. Commissioners are likely aware of that. You may well be aware of that. We have, in our application, tried very diligently to mitigate, if not completely negate, the impact on the area. We committed to an electronic gate that separates this property to Mohawk Drive in the rear. And we agreed to all the recommendations of the State Department of Transportation despite the fact that the development did not meet the level of a necessary traffic study. Nonetheless, we went through with that process with the state, listened to what they asked for, listened to the city transportation officials in Mr. Mayor's office, and did what we needed to do and did what they requested we do. So I don't want to belabor the point. You all have the report in front of you. Again, it was a seven to one recommendation. It is a development, again, that is consistent with the future land use map that's been in place now since two thousand and twelve. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those. Like I said, Mr. Simpson, property owner's here as well.
Yes. Mr. Davenport, couple of three questions that I have. And in your presentation, you've already answered one. I guess, changing my question, what determines as to whether or not there is going or there is a need to be a traffic count? In other words, does forty thousand cars, cars bring about a traffic count or forty-two thousand bring about a traffic count?
Commissioner Dean, that question is, the determining factor for that issue is the number of units that is proposed. And the reason for that is there is a correlation between the, the amount of units you intend to add to an area and the amount of traffic that can be expected. In commercial ventures, the standard is different because obviously commercial standards, there aren't units to be considered. But in housing situations, which this is, this is a housing But in housing situations, which this is, this is a housing development, the cutoff is at fifty units. At fifty units, a traffic study either has to be conducted or you've got to go through the waiver process, which frankly has become much more commonplace in the last few years. Luckily, at both the state level and at the city level, those officials work very well with planning staff in reviewing applications and deciding what infrastructure improvements a developer needs to commit themselves to to mitigate the traffic concerns. So kind of to circle back, Commissioner Dunning, to answer your question, the level would have been at fifty. We're at thirty-two. We went through that process anyways. We went ahead and submitted the request to the state transportation officials who have say about Campbell Lane, and we submitted it to the city officials who have say about Mohawk Drive, the two roadways that connect to our development. We followed the recommendations they made, and that, again, I didn't get to it earlier, but that's a write-in, write-out only on Campbell Drive. And because we've got the access on Campbell Drive in some form or fashion, we knew that the neighbors behind us didn't want this to be a cut-through. They didn't want this to be a situation where the public could just use our development as a cut-through. So we committed to an electronic gate accessed only by the residents and by fire control, which means the public can't get through there. So, in essence, we have a thirty-two unit development that has two access points, one of which is limited. That'd be the back one with the electronic gate.
I guess my next question, just being an old country boy from Bowling Green, as I look at your ingress and egress here on to Campbell Lane, I also look at the fact of its closeness with a right turn only out of there to the Small House Road stoplight. And just checking in the whole picture, Campbell Lane with Bowling Green Junior High School going on, another department complex down the road towards Nashra Road, are we going to create a problem even with the right turn at this intersection going towards Small House Road with a light being there and they already lined up?
Mr. Dean, I'll have to rely upon the opinion of the state and the city transportation officials in that their opinions necessarily must have been no. And the reason I say that is, again, they made the recommendation of what infrastructure improvements were necessary to mitigate traffic. I have developments of clients I represent, sometimes the state or the city folks come back and say, "We need an additional lane. We need a deceleration lane or an additional merger lane." That was not the requirement here. And so I, again, I'm not a city engineer and I don't, I guess I proclaim to be a lot of things, but I am not an engineer. But our developer, my client, his engineers worked with the city and the state folks, and that was not indicated as being necessary or even desired by the transportation folks, Commissioner. So I think the answer to that question based upon that is, would be no. And secondarily, that the amount of what they call stacking, and that's the amount of space you have for vehicles that are ingressing or egressing is sufficient between our point and that light. Again, in consideration of the amount of traffic thirty-two units is likely to produce, we could probably contrast this with a situation if we had, like down the street, you're talking about the other developments that have some four hundred units trying to ingress and egress within that proximity to the light. I would imagine the engineers would have something different to say about that. Although there is multifamily very close to us, those developments have upwards of fourteen units an acre with three floors, we're very much a different development than what we have just down the street.
Of course, at the other location, they do have a stoplight right there in front of the junior high. And let me state this, these questions are mine and mine only. I have not had any conversation with anyone pertaining to this project, but having worked for Mike Murphy for many years, when I look at a map, sometime it brings questions to my mind. And this distance between the ingress and egress and the Small House Road, it appears, and I know, as you said, Mr. Davenport, our city engineer who thinks the world of is giving okay on this, apparently it doesn't create the problem that I think that it may. But I had to ask those questions to clear my mind.
Understand, Commissioner, I think they're very insightful questions. And frankly, with some of the debate we had before the Planning Commission, before that seven to one vote was taken, there was a lot of talk, you'll see in the record, about the traffic and the impact and what the state and city required of us to mitigate that.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Not at this point.
No, Mayor, I do not.
Heard, the audience heard me explain earlier, we're very limited on what information can be presented at the city commission meeting. We're required either to vote on the record or start all over again. The record, I think I gave a DVD to everybody if they chose to watch it, but the record is actually here written before us, actually saw it. If there's someone here who spoke that evening, would like to summarize their comments, I can't take any additional evidence or additional information, but you're welcome to come and summarize what your presentation was, and that would be your opportunity. So you can come up here and come on up to the microphone. And give me your name, please.
Lena Hunley.
Okay, Ms. Hunley, let me.
And I'm just representing my own comments here.
Twelve eleven Shady Court, right.
Yes, twelve eleven Shady Court. And I would first move that the commission have a brand-new hearing on this matter so that we could have a full hearing with everyone presenting stuff. But I'm happy to just present for myself if you're not willing to do that, but I ask that you take a vote on that.
Have to have grounds for a new hearing. Would you have any presentation?
I do have grounds.
Information that would cause us to have new grounds?
I do have grounds for a new hearing. There were procedural irregularities at the prior hearing. At the prior hearing, for one thing, the client was not questioned until the closing argument, so there was no testimony from the client, and we were not allowed to cross-examine the client. Secondly, they introduced new evidence during their closing argument, and we were not allowed to counter that even though we asked. We were not allowed to address anything they said at that point. So basically, we had new evidence coming in and we were not allowed to counter it. And I think that those are very important grounds. I also heard that some people that live nearby did not receive written notice of the hearing that were immediately adjacent to the property. I don't know for sure if that's true or not, but that is a concern for me.
Unless you have them here telling us that, we're going to make the presumption that they were adequately served. I don't know how to address that from a hearsay standpoint.
Okay.
Now, on the issue with regard to procedural irregularities, I'll invite the planning and zoning attorney, Hampton Moore, to come and address what you've heard. Can you help us with that, please, sir?
Yes. Good evening. I was present, of course, at the hearing that occurred on this application. There was during the course of the comments which were received from the neighborhood opposition, and I haven't gone back to review the transcript to identify the person who raised it, but there was a person from the neighborhood speaking in opposition to the application who raised an issue involving whether or not the people who lived in this development would be renters.
It would be Blake Burnett, according to the record.
I think that's right.
Blake Burnett.
Blake.
The Federal Fair Housing Act makes it improper for a zoning authority to make a decision which discriminates based upon economics. And in particular, it would be inappropriate, according to the Federal Fair Housing Act, for the commission to make a decision based on the fact that a particular development would potentially have residents who rented rather than owned. This is nevertheless an issue that comes up from time to time. It's not a surprise to us, and when I heard it that night, my antennas necessarily go up, but it was stated more than just that statement, but a statement which ascribed to renters attributes which were arguably different from those who owned the property. That was made by the opposition. At the conclusion of the presentation by the neighborhood opposition, Mr. Davenport got up, he was the applicant, he'd already finished his case, and he said, "May I offer some response, rebuttal to that, that issue of renters?" And then he proceeded to present evidence about looking at PVA records as to whether or not there were also folks who rented homes in the surrounding neighborhood. That, too, was, of course, an irrelevant sort of inquiry, which the Planning Commission could not properly base its decision on. But it had been raised and it had been responded to, and at least in my mind, I wasn't sitting as the chair, but it was in my mind an issue that had been raised and responded to. It was irrelevant to the proceeding and it needed to be brought to a conclusion. So, Mr. Davenport made that argument, and it then was time for closing arguments. And if you look at the record, I'm sure you'll see that that was a pretty seamless sort of occurrence because they occurred at the same time. Mr. Davenport then presented his closing argument, which he is entitled to do. There was not anyone from the neighborhood opposition who sought to make a closing argument. There was, however, a gentleman who asked if he could offer some more evidence on this rental issue, and the chairman declined that opportunity, feeling that the issue had sufficiently, had been sufficiently discussed already. So, that led to the ultimate vote and the recommendation that comes before you.
So your comments to us are that any reference to rental property in either the, by the applicant or the opposition, by law should be ignored by us in our consideration?
Sir, that recommendation or advice to you is the same to the Planning Commission and it would be the same to you.
Chairman, do you concur with it?
Yes, I think even more importantly, when you start talking about income levels with renters, and I know some of those comments as well, you know, the Fair Housing Act does prohibit zoning decisions based upon income levels of individuals.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. So did Joe, I'm sorry. It's just been.
I don't know, no. The gentleman in the far back back there, did you testify at the prior hearing, at the commission?
That's Gene Shy, yes, sir.
Mr. Shy, can I ask Mr. Shy to come forward, because he seems to be concerned about everything that has been said, and I won't.
Well, he's welcome to come up if he chooses to. The questions that we ask will have to be limited to his testimony.
Yes, I'm standing here.
Our sir.
Mr. Shy.
Only because I have a question for Mr. Moore.
Okay.
Can I ask that one question, please?
You're coming back, though.
Mr. Moore, if I understood you right, and I paraphrase, that the neighborhood residents declined a closing argument.
If I said that, I misspoke.
Well, I'm not saying you did. Allow me, I want to be clear about it.
You are clear about that.
Okay. So they did not decline a closing argument?
They were not offered a closing argument, nor did they decline it.
And why were they not offered one?
Because they had not selected a representative to be their spokesman, either for the purposes of an opening or as a closing. As the hearing began, we, of course, provided an opportunity for opening. We, as I recall, the board chair, commission chair, asked if they had a spokesman. They did not, and instead, perfectly acceptable way to proceed, they chose to come forward sequentially and make their arguments in opposition. And it maybe might be a better practice in the future is for us to then give an opportunity at the very end for one of them to select a person to be a spokesman. But they were provided that opportunity on the front end, but they were not offered that opposition on the back end.
When they were provided it on the front end, were they told that if they didn't select a spokesperson, that they would not be provided the opportunity to offer a closing argument?
They were not.
And why is it necessary that a spokesperson be identified?
We know who to make that presentation. Without a spokesperson, then, of course, they then self-select each person to come forward and speak, and we take the time that it takes for each of them to come forward and make their statements.
The challenge for me, from just a procedural standpoint, and I've had ongoing discussions with men about these types of things, is when you have a neighborhood that is presenting as opposed to a developer who's presenting or a group of people, the developer generally seems to be on the same page. They generally know what it is that they want, and they hire an attorney to advocate for that, which is what they want. When you have a neighborhood, surely they could go out and hire an attorney, but each individual landowner seems like they should have the opportunity to both make an opening, make their argument, and make a closing. And I understand it would take a long time, I've been involved in meetings that take a long time, but why are citizens not afforded that as opposed to having to have one person from, I don't know how many homes are in Shawnee, and how many people live inside those homes? Whereas you have a small collection of developers, or even one developer, who has a spokesperson through an attorney.
You make excellent legitimate points, and they're valid. The Planning Commission, of course, meets twice a month, twelve months a year. Last year had over a thousand cases before it, and so there necessarily is a limited amount of time. And so I can assure you, I take seriously what you're suggesting, and we'll do our best to try to afford that opportunity to open up and summarize without being repetitive so that we make sure we have a real public hearing. This is not a judicial proceeding, as you know, it's what's called a quasi-judicial proceeding, which means that it has some trial-type aspects to it, but it's still a public hearing. It's kind of like what we're doing here, you just open up the mic and let anybody come forward and say their piece. And that's what we try to do, week in, week out, and I.
That answers my question. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Moore? Thank you. Mr. Shy, come on up.
Now, Mr. Shy, your comments are only pertaining to the same comments you made at the initial hearing. at the initial hearing. And the mayor is looking at those comments. I'm not. I've got them, just like everybody else. So, I know you remember your dad. And let's go.
Well, actually, I was going to answer the questions you had for me. Hopefully, if I can recall that. And if not, if it's all right, I may call upon my wife, who is the note taker of the family. But one of the points that was answered, actually, the fact that when we began the meeting at Planning and Zoning, we were not aware of the fact that we needed to have a spokesperson. As a matter of fact, that was the first meeting of what they called the new procedural method that they were following. And what rules that we were given were posted right at the very beginning as the meeting began. So, we were unaware of any of that, and we kind of felt shortchanged from that.
Were there some other comments that were being, that has been made prior to your presence that you felt were not quite the way you understood, based on your testimony?
I felt, as I did during the Planning and Zoning Commission, there was a lot of supposition that was made, a lot of things that were left kind of arbitrarily open-ended. Some of the traffic things, and I agree with you, Commissioner Denning, that especially at drive time, in the mornings and the afternoon, those turn lanes are packed. They're almost inaccessible. Small House Road is lined up essentially all the way to Cave Mill. It's going to be a serious issue. And these people are going to be looking for a route through the neighborhood in some form or fashion. And it's going to, it'll impact the neighborhood. There's no doubt about that. We know that it will. And given the fact that there's a very short street coming out of where the proposed development is, and Thimblefinger being a short street on the Small House, you essentially won't be able to get out of your home through that area. And that's one of our biggest concerns.
Why are you there? Mayor, Chris, and Mr. Moore, I guess I want both of you to hear this. Now, the gate that is going to be on the south side, which is the Mohawk Drive area, is that going to be just for the individuals that live in the complex? In other words, no one else can get in? But those individuals can come out the backside on Mohawk? Yes.
So, what the body elements require was electronic access for the residents and for emergency personnel, and a no-way-out sign as you entered. So, there was specific discussion about this, that the reason for the no-way-out sign, and I might be misphrasing that, but a sign saying that there's no, you can't get anywhere through that. There was discussion that that, in some ways, is, you know, a detriment to my client. But what we want to tell people is you cannot get through that gate unless you live there or you're emergency personnel.
So, they can't, someone in there?
Can't get out.
Can't get out on Mohawk?
Cannot. Unless you're a resident, and you have the electronic access.
Right.
So, I'm not a resident, Commissioner Denning.
Right.
And I decided I want to cut over to Cave Mill.
Yes.
And I don't want to go the extra however far it is to go that light. And I see this development, and I see the sign that says no way out, and I decide to risk it. I can't get through the gate.
Okay.
I've got to turn around. Basically, the sign is not a misnomer. The sign is correct, in that there is no way out of Mohawk. And the reason for that, obviously, is to cut the impact down as much as possible on Mohawk. I understand Mr. Shy's comment, that will some of these residents, of these thirty-two units, use the city streets? I'm not here to say they won't. Okay, of course they will. But we don't want anyone and everyone using our development as a cut-through, hence those restrictions.
How will the residents get through the gate? Will they have a, is it a keypad? Is it a clicker like you'd have on a garage door opener? Is it a magnetic strip or some type of strip, like I'd use at the car wash?
It could be any of those, Commissioner. And so, this body well knows that the development is restricted by its binding elements. And what the binding element said, that would be restricted electronic access. So, all of those are options.
I just wonder, then, what, how often, if it were a keypad, and people will move, I assume, in and out of this development? And will that number, if it's a keypad, will that number be changed? Or will previous people who live there have access to that keypad? If it's a keypad, do residents who live there have the opportunity to give that number to people who are visiting with them?
I would assume this will not be a keypad. And what I would assume it will be is electronic access in the cars, because that will enable my client to disable that access as soon as a person moves out. Because they have no intention or benefit by letting people continue to have access in their development when they don't have any reason being there. If that makes sense, Commissioner. Thank you.
And actually, another point that you'd brought up, Commissioner Denning, one of our concerns, as far as the access point into that entire neighborhood, Shawnee and beyond, there's that one lighted access point at the junior high school. And with that additional traffic, we have a great deal of concern with that taking place in front of a school. That's already a very busy area through there. And as residents, it's going to be difficult for us to get through. But also, we worry about the school buses and the amount of traffic twice a day that's going to be coming through there at that one lighted access point out of that entire community. So, that's a big concern for us also.
I might have one question for Mr. Moore, if I might. Just a procedural, a little bit about what went on at P&amp;Z and what might go on in the future. If a group were to select a spokesperson at the beginning of a meeting, like the one that occurred, would that then preclude individuals from being able to come up and give their individual comments?
Oh, that happens regularly. Neighborhoods will either designate a spokesperson or they hire a lawyer. And we always allow that to proceed with a representative. But at every step along the way, we say, well, is there anybody else not represented by this spokesperson who'd like to speak? And so, it's both, not or.
And was that explained at that particular meeting to this particular group?
Not like I just now did. You're correct.
Thank you, sir. Other comments or questions? All right. Do you have something else, Mr. Shy?
No, sir, not right at the moment, but thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Shy? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Did you have, was there another member of the community who spoke that evening have a desire to summarize their comments as well? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Relena Hunley, twelve-eleven, Shady Court. I did want to summarize my comments. On the zoning change staff report, on page two, there were a number of applicable goals that they needed to meet in order to get the zoning change recommended for approval, and of course, for you to approve it or disapprove it here. What I wanted to point out was that there are ten different goals where it says either may comply or generally complies. Okay? Ten of them. Plus, we had another one, land use one point one-three, where they said the planning commission should determine if the proposal complies. So, there are a number of big concerns here, and I really honestly don't think any of those are met. What we've got here, let me just give you a list. May comply with LU two, LU two-point-one. Generally complies with LU two-point-one. May comply with LU two-point-five. May comply with LU two-point-five-point-two, HN one, HN one-point-three. If it's compatible with area, may comply with LU two-point-five-three. Generally complies with TR two-point-one. Generally complies with HN two-point-one and HN four. And if you actually look at these, it doesn't comply. So, we've got LU one-point-one-three. It says, "All proposals for new development must be assessed to determine their compatibility with existing surrounding development. Compatibility may be shown because the proposed use is the same as the surrounding neighborhood, or it may be established by site design, buffering, control of access through the adjacent neighborhood, or other measures." Here's the problem here. In this neighborhood, we have a little teeny-tiny skinny, small, Thimblefinger Road. Out of that, you can only turn, people would want to turn left on the Small House. Can't turn left on the Small House because there's so much traffic. So, everybody has to go down Mohawk, across Edgefield, up Thoroughbred, to get out of the light by the junior high. Okay? So, you can't fix that traffic issue. That's just the reality of what the roads are around there. That's what the roads look like. Okay? You can't, you're basically sticking these apartment complexes in between houses. Because on Mohawk, you've got houses going all the way down. On Thimblefinger, you've got houses going across. And you've got a house on either side of where Mohawk would go intersect this housing development. So, it's really hard to make something like that compatible with buffering and stuff. They want to put a six-foot fence that doesn't really close anything off from having these two-story apartments looking down on ranch homes. Okay? It's just not something that you can really do well with that. Land use two. This is one of the mays. Encourage compact, sustainable, high-quality development, which protects community character. This doesn't protect our community character. This is a single-family home community that's been around since the sixties. Nice homes that people can get into with a decent amount of money. You don't have to be rich to live there. But we have renters, that's fine. We're happy with them. We like our renters. They've been there for, you know, the neighbors next to us have been there way longer than we've been there, and they're great neighbors. I'm perfectly happy with there being rental homes there. How about L point two-point-one? Improve design standards. Well, this is not as nice as what's by it, unfortunately. If it was, we wouldn't be objecting. LU two-point-one-one. This is a generally, talking about open space retention. This is going to be a lot less open space than what we have existingly where there's a house. You've got a house right now on a long lot. That's what a lot of Bowling Green looks like, is a house on a long lot. This is a house on a long lot and a little teeny-tiny lot that connects it to Mohawk. And they want to put in thirty-two units there, where if you look at the houses on the side of it, there are about five houses. So, it's really not similar. LU two-point-five. Stabilize and protect Bowling Green's older neighborhoods. This does not stabilize and protect our neighborhood. What's going to happen here is that if this goes through, the people on either side that are in houses are going to have a great incentive to sell. Then they're going to want to put up more apartment complexes. This is one of the few areas in the city that's safe, that's a good place for people, and that is really stable. It's not, you know, getting to be the greatest neighborhood. It's not going downhill. I mean, we have people retiring, moving out, new people coming in. It's a very stable area. LU two-point-five-two. Compatibility of infill development. This is not compatible with what's there already. It just isn't. And you can't make it compatible by these little design elements they've put in. LU two-point-five-three. Continue to identify and promote opportunities for revitalization and redevelopment. If they want a redevelopment, put in more single-family homes. We need more single-family homes in the city of Bowling Green that people can afford, middle-class people like me. Action TR two-point-one. Continue to require that all private and public development is undertaken in a manner which promotes connectivity and minimizes traffic congestion on the existing road network. It can't do that based on what roads are there right now. I understand the thing of, we're trying to protect what's happening on to Campbell, that it's going to make it a right turn only. That solves Campbell, but it messes up the rest of the neighborhood traffic flow because everybody has to go the other way if they want to get out on the left. They're going to have to go out at that light. That's really the only way to get out when it's, you know, peak travel time. Because you can't, you physically can't go out Thimblefinger Road and turn left because the traffic is all lined up to the light. I mean, I'll go out there, and it's lined up, you know, twenty cars deep past where that turn is. So, it just, this just doesn't fit with what we've got here. Objective HN one. Promote development of infill sites with existing urban services and suitable redevelopment projects that maintain or improve existing character. This doesn't do that. HN one-point-three. Continue to identify and promote opportunities for infill and redevelopment, particularly projects which may strengthen existing neighborhoods and districts. This does not strengthen us. This makes our neighborhood worse. Action HN two-point-one. Prove diversification of new housing stock. We've got lots of housing stock out there. We've got apartment buildings right next to us already. We have low-income housing right next to us already. We have a retirement community nursing home right there. We've got lots of different housing opportunities right in the neighborhood right now. We don't need more apartments right there. There's plenty of apartments all over the city of Bowling Green. You're putting up way more downtown. We have to have someplace to live where we're not all forced out into the county. We don't all want to live in the county. I want to live in Bowling Green. I moved specifically to be in the city of Bowling Green. I was in the annex area, and I didn't like it very well. I wanted to be in the city schools. I have kids, and I wanted a good education for them. I don't want to feel like I have to go thirty minutes out of Bowling Green to get them a decent education, or not be in a safe area. HN four. Encourage an array of housing objects. Just said, we've got a lot of housing options right there. So, if you look at this, those are my ten items. These are all reasons to vote against approving this. And I hope that you'll all take this really seriously, because we're looking at what our neighborhood's supposed to look like now and what we want for the future in Bowling Green. And I want to be able to live here. And I don't want everybody who has a long lot, that lives next to a long lot, to be worrying that there's going to be an apartment complex going up there. We shouldn't have to worry about that. Thanks.
Do they have any questions, Commissioner Hunley? Was there anyone else from the neighborhood who spoke that night that would need to come forward and speak?
The apartments they have on Campbell Lane are too much already. The apartments are, in fact, so much that the Bowling Green Junior High School says not to bike to the Bowling Green Junior High building, even if you are in biking range. They say this because of traffic caused by those who live in the apartment complex just across the street. I do not want this to make traffic for my school. I do not want this, the buses, to be wait because of traffic. I know thirty-four properties might think this will make them some money. But I suggest that another location would probably make just around the same amount. I would also like it if the little six-year-olds at my street could ride their bikes without their parents worrying about traffic, without having to worry about traffic themselves. I think these little kids should be allowed to ride their bikes without this much traffic. Don't you? This is why I think another location would be more suitable for the apartment complex.
Anyone else who spoke that night need to bring to our attention information? Yes, ma'am. That was Blake Hunley.
Blaine or Blake?
Diana McQuaidy. I live at one oh oh-two Edgefield Way. Thank you for letting us be here tonight. May I ask you a question? May I make a response to something I heard earlier tonight?
And with regard to your comments, it would be limited to what you made presentation on that night.
I have no idea of what I said that night. I think I talked about traffic.
You talked about traffic and a petition, and that's about it.
I answer another question. Oh, the petition? I'll be glad to bring that up, then. I have a copy of it.
We have a copy of it.
Good.
It was presented with our.
Good. And one of the reasons we did not, you know, be able to bring a copy that night, we have a copy from the prior, back in July, was... night, we, we have a copy from the prior, um, back in July, was because we could, we were trying to get, we would have liked to have gotten a new one, but one of our reasons for asking for a new hearing was because of the short time we had with two major holidays in that time, very cold weather, and the flu. So I, I guess that's all, since I'm, I'm limited so much. And I do hope that changes too in the future. Thank you.
I think it's six, sixty-some, sixty-four. Three-two and three-quarters page of, of petitions. She's already gone. Okay. Would there be anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Gracee Duff, eleven-thirty-three Glenview Way. Um, I'd like to thank you, Mayor Wilkerson, and the commissioners for taking the time to review the record from the planning and zoning meeting. Um, I, and your fellow constituents in Shawnee subdivision, Allen Dell Heights, Churchill, um, we've got many names over there, appreciate your attention to this matter. I'm going to hit on the, um, points that I made at the meeting in January. Um, Rolena hit on some of them as well. From the Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan, future land use objective two-point-five. Stabilize and protect Bowling Green's older neighborhoods. Action for that point, for action LU one-point-one-point-three. Requested rezonings shall be reviewed for consistency with the flume and the development review provisions listed below. One of those is, site design and compatibility review. All proposals for new development must be assessed to determine their compatibility with the existing surrounding development. The proposed development, as you've already heard, is not compatible with the houses we live in, which were built in the nineteen-sixties. It is a very nice proposal that they have that would look beautiful somewhere else that's not already zoned as a single-family, um, area, but it is not compatible. If you look at the duplex plan that they have, that is not, that looks nothing like ranch homes that were built in the nineteen-sixties. Um, objective, transportation objective TR dash-two. Revise regulatory provisions and develop standards and develop other programs to promote efficient and safe mobility and mitigate transit congestion. I know the issue of traffic's already been brought up. Action TR two-point-one. Continue to require that all private and public development is undertaken in a manner which promotes connectivity and minimizes traffic congestion. I know that there is not a, a study required to be done. I'm worried about the traffic congestion on the Mohawk side, um, not necessarily the Campbell Lane, because people are not going to be going, trying to turn out on Campbell Lane. They're going to come down Mohawk. Because unless they are turning to go right on Campbell Lane and they're right on Small House, there's no reason for them to turn out on Campbell Lane. Any other way they're trying to go out of our neighborhood, they're going to come through Mohawk. Our neighborhood does not have sidewalks. Their development plan shows that it would be up to eighty new vehicles in, with the duplex. It's thirty-two, um, units, up to eighty vehicles. Eighty vehicles coming in and out of that Mohawk stub two or three times a day. And the traffic increase up and down, not only from Mohawk to Thimblefinger, but Mohawk all the way around to the one stoplight that we have in front of the Junior High. You know, our children, whenever they're dropped off on the bus, are not dropped off in front of our houses. They're dropped off three streets up and have to walk. With no sidewalk, and eighty, up to eighty additional vehicles going in and out of that neighborhood three times a day, it's unnecessarily, it's unnecessary traffic addition to our See what else? I know I'm limited to what I said, and so I'm trying to, that's one thing I, I do want to point out, is I was the first speaker in opposition in January. We did not know that we were going to be limited to three minutes until the time that we got there. And so that really affected, um, our presentations as well. Just to summarize, the additional traffic strain that's, that it will cause on our already established neighborhood, along with the fact that the proposed property is not compatible to the homes around the area, nor does it maintain or improve, or strengthen existing character, I would respectfully request that you deny this application, as it is not consistent with the Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan. The last point was the housing and neighborhoods objective HN dash-one, which says it should maintain or improve existing character. And the action HN one-point-three, strengthen existing neighborhoods and districts. I ask you just to think about that right there, the strengthening, the existing neighborhoods and districts, and the amount of traffic that they are wanting to bring into our neighborhood when the city commission back in two thousand and five, I believe, already voted to shut down a pass-through in our neighborhood to cut down on traffic in our neighborhood. I, I just ask you to take that into consideration.
Would there be anyone else, uh, from the opposition that night that would need to summarize their comments? Yes, sir? Yes, sir? Remind me of your name, please, sir? If, if that's, if that wasn't presented the night of the hearing, we won't, we won't be able to consider that. Was that presented that night?
No, it was not. It is mainly just to, as an ex-teacher, uh, show you what I'm talking about.
But we've got, uh, we have plenty of maps up here to.
That'll be fine. That's fine.
Tell me what your name is, sir?
Donald Travis.
Yes, sir. Twenty-five, twenty-four-fifty Small House Road. Go right ahead.
Um, the lot that is, uh, touching Campbell Lane goes along with the total planning and zoning commission as to, uh, commercial development. That particular lot would be backing up to a senior citizen, a Morningside Center, which seems reasonable. My objection would be to the particular lot that was cut in two, that was on Small House Road. The lot started as, uh, one family residence. The gentleman that owned it had a three-bedroom house. When he passed away, his wife lived there, but before that, they installed an indoors, or in-ground swimming pool. The grandkids enjoyed that very much, and he also attached a, uh, two-car.
Mr. Travis, I need to interrupt you here. That, that doesn't appear to be any part of the testimony that you provided that evening. You were, you were talking about the, uh, single-family home. Is that who you're referring to? This piece of property?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
This piece of property.
I apologize. Go right ahead.
And that's, that's the one that comes up to, uh, Mohawk Drive.
Okay. I apologize. Go right ahead.
That's perfectly all right. Uh, sometimes I get confused with what I say.
Right ahead. Thank you.
Um, that was, um, after they passed away. It was sold and subdivided into two, um, individual lots. One had retaining the house and the swimming pool. The other lot was going as a single-family residence that attached, or came into Small House Road, uh, into, uh, Mohawk Drive. Uh, that stays a, or should stay, I feel, as a single-family residence, because it is compatible with the rest of the community. That's the main objection that I have. Uh, the apartments and things seem to be compatible with the overall plan. The ones, uh, that they rezoned simply to gain access to Mohawk Drive should stay as a single-family residence, I feel, as it was before, and when they first started subdividing, uh, all the houses on the west side of Small House Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Travis. I'm sorry to have interrupted you there. I misunderstood. Any, any other questions for Mr. Travis? Was there anyone else in the opposition that wanted to summarize their comments?
Melanie Shy, twenty-four forty-four Mohawk Drive. My house butts up directly to this development. Um, everyone has talked about the traffic. That is our biggest concern. Not only that, but it is also not compatible with our neighborhood. We are single families. We have children that ride bikes, that ride scooters, that walk. And adding eighty cars, three times a day, to streets that have children on them that walk, that have to walk to ride the bus, that walk just because it's in the neighborhood, is dangerous. And I just don't see where having access to our neighborhood is compatible. We've already closed Navajo because, by this very commission, because it was not compatible with what was going on around it. So how is it that it's okay to allow access now, when we closed the access before? Thank you.
Questions from this? Is anyone else that needs to summarize their comments before the city commi, uh, planning Anyone else? Does any member of the commission have a comment or statement they'd like to make? Yes, sir?
I have a question for.
Anything to add, Mr. Davenport?
Only, only thing I'll add, Mayor, is I think in, because I want to bring the focus back to the commission's recommendation. The recommendation before you specifically found by the commission, those comprehensive plan policies, all favored the rezoning request. That was their specific recommendation to you. Uh, that recommendation, I, I think, was largely, was in part based upon Mr. Peterson's testimony, that the staff found no policies of the comp plan out of compliance with this request. And that is summarizing the minutes. You'll see that very early on in his testimony. Thank you all.
Mr. Peterson, or Mr. Moore, either one. Is it accurate that there were new rules that were in effect for the meeting that evening?
There, the planning commission, um, over the last quarter, has adopted some policies that govern the presentation of evidence. Um, they've, they have been implemented, uh, over the past quarter. This hearing, I believe, was on November the eighth. Um, I don't recall if we had used those rules prior to that time. I believe we had, to some extent. Um, but they were, um, they were rules that the planning commission asked the staff to draft in order to provide some structure to the presentations, and they were an effort to do that. So, long, long answer to short question. I'm sorry.
Yeah. I believe this meeting occurred, though, in January.
January fourth.
Not in November.
The pre-app meeting was on November eighth.
I'm sorry. I was looking at the app. You're, you're correct.
Would the, would what you just said, though, still apply regardless of which date the meeting was on?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I'm, I'm sorry.
Uh, the limited, each individual being limited to three minutes to speak, does that apply across the board? Does that apply to Mr. Davenport? Does that apply to residents? Is, is that an across-the-board? And is that at all planning and zoning meetings, or was that something new? Or was that only implemented in this particular one?
The policy, uh, imposes a fifteen-minute limitation on the presentation of, uh, one side or the other if they're represented by an attorney. That fifteen-minute limitation does not apply to the presentation of the staff report. In other words, it doesn't come out of their fifteen minutes. So that fifteen-minute, uh, limitation, uh, and I, it'd be incorrect to say that there was any buzzer going off or any, uh, it, just a, an effort to try to get some structure, put some limitations. So fifteen minutes if the party is represented, three minutes per speaker if it's a neighborhood that's unrepresented, and of course, the three minutes can be three times three, or three times twelve, and I think.
And is that a, a rule that's in effect all the time?
Yes, sir.
No matter how long or how short they anticipate meetings to be?
We, as I say, we've never really tried to have it be a straitjacket, but, uh, they have not formally voted to deviate from those rules since they started using them.
And, and so that was not a new rule that night? Were there any new rules that night?
Oh, sir, I don't, I don't believe so.
Okay.
I, I believe they've been in effect for several months. Now, they may well have heard someone, the chairman may have said, now, we have a new set of rules, and they were, they were actually both up on the screens, and, and so I think that characterization of new might have been interpreted as new tonight, as opposed to new this year.
And are those rules published somewhere where they could find them, so that if somebody wanted to come speak before the planning commission, and they wanted to prepare, they could find those meetings, they could find those rules and, and, and be prepared?
They're, they were, of course, published that night, and I believe they're on the website. Not on the website? No, they're not.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Comments or questions? Mr.?
Your honor, I think that, uh, you need to, or suggest that we remind everyone that this is just the first reading. Uh, and there will be a second reading of saying, and, uh, you may have done that earlier. I think you did.
And, um, the city commission's operations under law is a little bit different, because this is an ordinance, and ordinance requires two readings, uh, and the final vote is, um, March the, whatever the first meeting in March is.
March sixth.
Sixth, March sixth. Are there any com, other comments or questions?
I have a proposal.
Yes, sir?
I would make a motion from the floor that we have a new hearing. Based upon, uh, that the, those that were opposed to the zoning, uh, were not aware that a spokesperson was needed, that the rules governing the meeting are not published, so that people are able to see them, uh, when they prepare for the meeting, and that there is some dispute about whether, uh, there were new rules that were in effect for that evening.
Motion is for a new hearing, and what that means is that anything that's happened to this point doesn't count, and we start fresh, and start advertising again.
I understand. It's a significant expense, and, and, and it is, uh, significant trouble for all parties involved, uh, but I think based upon, uh, the fact that, uh, I don't want to ever sit in the seat and feel like people didn't have their opportunity to be heard, that it is a process worth pursuing at this time, even at the expense and the time that it will take.
Motion for a new, on the floor, there's.
I was second.
Second by the. Motion is for, uh, to have a entirely new hearing, uh, which would then be a de novo hearing, start fresh, nothing that happened previously would count, and we start over again. So the motion is for a new hearing at this point, uh, and this would be the appropriate place for it to be made. It'll be a motion for a new hearing, it's got to be now, before we take the vote. So, any comments or questions before we get to the vote? Uh, yes is for a new hearing, and no is for to vote on what we heard thus far. Please go right. I'm sorry.
Would we be conducting the new hearing, or planning and zoning?
The hearing would not be a planning and zoning. It would come to us. We would be placing ourselves as the planning commission, making the, the new decision here.
It's been a few years since we've done that, but we would do the entirely, the same process the planning commission goes through. We would have to send out notification to property owners. We'd have to set a date. We'd have to put a sign at the location to advertise the hearing date and time. So it would be, it would be an entirely new process, but based on the way the planning commission does it in front of the board of commissioners.
Would the, would the planning and zoning commission staff be here to make the presentation of what their, uh, staff report? That they would not forward a recommendation from the planning commission? The staff information is already prepared. It would just be starting over for the hearing.
It would be the same thing professional-wise that they did before the planning commission. They would be done before the city commission or the city of Bowling Green.
As I understand it, the staff can generate a new report, because since the whole process is starting over.
That's correct.
Anything, all options are then on the table again, as I understand it.
Our staff would not be presenting. It would be planning and zoning that would bring that information to us.
That's what I was saying.
As well as the individual residents, anything that has taken place or that they didn't add at their original, uh, hearing can be added at this hearing. can be added at this hearing. Is that correct?
Ask your question again.
In other words, this is a new hearing. Brand-new hearing.
Yes, sir, all, all people that, there'd be no limitation on who speaks at that hearing if you vote to do this. That they can speak whether they spoke at a Planning Commission previous or not. This will be an all-new hearing from the very beginning. You know, your first thing I suspect have probably been would be the first witness, just like he is at the Planning Commission, and then maybe Chris will make his argument, and then it'll be open to anybody and everybody, because like Katie said, we'll notice, we'll give notice to adjacent property owners, we'll post the property. Don't forget, we do have a ninety-day issue, but we still got plenty of time for that.
And the subject matter of the residence at the old hearing does not have to be the same subject matter at the hearing before the City Commission.
No, sir.
Totally new, everything's different, different ballgame.
Yes, sir, it'd be a totally new hearing on the very beginning.
Could, could somebody, could somebody that was not familiar with the rules or needed the rules, could they not have called the Planning Commission and asked them what the rules were?
They could, but if you don't know the process, you know, you don't put the information about, about what goes on, you know, that's. They could, but how do you know?
Mr. Davenport, I'm waving at you, Mayor.
Huh?
Mr. Davenport, Chris?
Yes, sir.
Like, since I didn't make the motion, the request is really by the opposition here. If I may just briefly tell you my client's position on this. I understand this board's desire to make sure due process is followed, because that's what needs to be followed. Every side should have due process. When Mr. Moore conducted this hearing before his body, it was explained to everyone in the room that I had so long to present my case. And anyone in that room that wanted to spoke, to speak, without limitation, could get up and provide what they wanted to provide. Now, I don't have a stop clock, but I recall this meeting, and if you look at the summary of the minutes, you'll see that I spoke for a drastic minority of the time. Mr. Hamp is correct that the strict formalities of a legal trial by jury are not required before that body. It's a question of fundamental fairness. Did the opposition have the fundamental fairness afforded to them to present their concerns? Yes, without question. They presented everything they wanted to present. They talked, and I, and I will agree with Mr. Moore, I don't remember Chair Runner that night stopping anybody because they got over three minutes. Now the question is, what's the fundamental fairness for my client? And I would urge you to keep that in mind as you take this vote. They followed the procedures of planning and zoning. There was a hearing that allowed everyone to present. Now, what their real argument is tonight, they didn't get to present a closing because they didn't have a spokesperson. The closing argument is not testimony. Closing argument is not the basis upon which Mr. Moore's client could have recommended or denied recommendation. Closing argument is not the basis upon which this body can either accept recommendation or turn down recommendation. There was no limitation on what they could provide information-wise. In fact, I agree with Mr. Moore, and I've said this many times. Testimony about renters and income levels should be cut off at the bud. That wasn't even stopped. The Planning Commission let those neighbors say their piece. And then they took a vote. Again, whatever could have been said or might have been said in summation and closing would not have been new, and it could not have been basis for a decision. So I ask this body to do right by due process of my client and decide the matter on the record that's been made. And secondarily, forego the expense and the time of having another hearing when the opposition behind me is not looking to supplement their testimony. They're complaining that they didn't get to make a closing of which had no testament, testamentary value. That could not have been the basis. So again, with that frame of mind, I would ask that you, that this motion not pass, that you vote no on this, and you don't set the precedent, frankly, of every unsatisfied person at a Planning Commission wanting to recreate the record. You had a thousand of these before that body last year. Mr. Moore's already told you that. In my experience with this body, you have looked at the record created by the Planning Commission and acted appropriately upon that. I would ask you to follow that precedent. Thank you, Mayor.
What was the vote again on the Planning Commission?
It was seven to one, Commissioner. And the very, the very findings that that body made were those very same policy elements that Ms. Hunley got up here and argued about earlier. That was their finding.
May I make one quick suggestion real quick? Maybe we want to rephrase this motion. Perhaps it sounds more like it's a motion to table this ordinance pending a, a new first reading at a public hearing?
Say that again?
Uh, it may be more appropriate, it's more like a motion to table the first reading of this ordinance pending a hearing. Uh, and then you'll have a new hearing and a new first reading.
I see what you're saying.
I would agree to that.
Agree with that second, sir?
Yeah.
All right, so the motion on the floor is to table, uh, this hearing, this, this first reading pending a new hearing. So I'll understand what we're voting on. Yes is to table, no is to move forward with the vote on the issue tonight. Is that clear? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
No.
Williams?
No.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
So the issue will be voted on at the first reading here tonight. And right now, we have a recommendation of seven yeses and one noes from the Planning Commission to approve the rezoning. And based on that hearing, that's, that's where we are. Are there any further comments or questions? Please call the roll. A yes vote is to approve the, um, recommendation, and a no vote is to deny the recommendation.
Nash?
No.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
No.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading is, has passed. Again, the City Commission has, under its state law required on ordinances, we have a second vote on March the sixth. And that will be the binding vote. All right, and I'll give you just a few minutes to step out. Okay, next we have a first reading of BG, ordinance BG two thousand eighteen eleven.
Ordinance relating to budget amendment, ordinance approving amendment number two to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, annual operating budget for fiscal year two thousand eighteen.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Paragon, second by Williams, Mr. DeFebbe.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a general housekeeping, uh, budget amendment process. Jeff is here if you'd like a detailed explanation, but generally, most of this is related to grants that are coming into the budget.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
These are pretty easy questions. Municipal order two thousand eighteen thirty?
Municipal order approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a motorcycle lease agreement with Motorsports of Bowling Green Incorporated for lease of four standard police package Harley-Davidson motorcycles for the sum of one dollar each.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Williams, second by Nash. Any comments?
Commissioner members, this is a yearly, uh, protocol we have with Cornelius Martin family to provide motorcycles to our police department. This is basically following the same protocol, and I would recommend your approval.
Fourteen years the Martin family has been doing this for the city. For a dollar a year, we get, or one dollar each. We get four motorcycles, and we want to certainly thank them for their support of our department and what they've got going, Mr. DeFebbe. I don't know that.
You come in and?
I don't know, it's the same people that I don't know.
It's, I, I don't, I just, no.
Been the same for a while. I'm not sure if it's been the same for all fourteen years, but it's been the same for the last several.
It hasn't been the same for fourteen.
And we thank them, we truly appreciate their support. Any, any other comments? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Uh, first reading of ordinance BG two thousand eighteen, number twelve.
Ordinance annexing property by consent, ordinance annexing one hundred and forty-three point two eight acres of property located at one thirteen and four thirty-five Brookwood Drive, forty-seven oh one and forty-eight fifty-nine Morgantown Road, and four fifty-three Rigglewood, Rigglewood Road Lane, with property owned by Jerry E. Baker, buy and through the estate of Jerry E. Baker, the Jerry E. Baker Foundation Incorporated, Texas Gas Transmission LLC, and the City of Bowling Green, and three point two six acres of right-of-way for a total of one hundred forty-six point five four acres, with said territory being contiguous to existing city limits.
So moved.
Paragon, second by Nash.
Ms. Paragon's sponsor, she would like to defer, Brent can give an explanation of the process, or Sue can, whatever she likes.
And I think Keith, is Keith Carwell here?
Yes.
Keith, if Keith wanted to say something. But no, it's Brent, go ahead.
Keep my comments brief. Commissioner Paragon approached me about assisting with the facilitation of this annexation. This is a little bit unique, that we're actually annexing a portion of our, our own property. So we're actually bringing one of our properties, that is the landscape facility and the, I think approximately seventeen acres that we own with that on Brookwood Drive. Then it touches Texas Gas, has a small parcel of land with a small building and a few employees there. And then it touches the Baker Foundation property, which used to be the old Lost River, or actually the old Deer Creek Golf Club. Then it became the Lost River Golf Club, and now it's part of the Arboretum and the museum there. So it would pick up the Mr. Baker's house, the Arboretum, the museum, the old golf course, the Texas Gas property, and also our property there at Landscape with the connection back across, uh, Natural Parkway to existing city, contiguous city limits there at, I think Jennings Mills subdivision. So I assisted in the process. This is just a straightforward annexation of about a hundred and forty-eight acres, I think is what it all. It's a weird shape once you draw all the corners out, that's for sure. So I'll entertain any questions the commission might have.
Questions from Mr.?
Were any of the other property owners approached about annexing?
No, we did not contact any of the other property owners. There's a couple there on, I think it's called Guinn Drive, I'm not sure that I'm pronouncing that correctly. G U I N N, uh, that is kind of wrapped around, uh, those were not approached, nor were the ones on, um, Brookwood. Brookwood would be, uh, the properties there, there's the old day treatment, I'm not sure what's in there now, the old port-a-pot place. So we did not approach any other property owners about annexation.
I'd like to comment that this is really, you know, a lot to do with the, um, a testament to the, to the public services that we have in relation to fire and police. That, uh, there's a, there's a lot of artwork, a lot of valuables there, and their interest is to, is to come into the city and have those services.
To go back to your question, Commissioner Nash, we'd be open to talking to anyone that was interested, we just not, did not reach out and start that conversation.
Is there, if this item passes, would the city send letters to those property owners, letting them know that they could come in?
We have, we were approached on this one by specifics, it was about accomplishing the specific one. Uh, we can do that. Uh, we've tried that as, as partnered with other large annexations. Whenever we brought in the Natural Parkway Holdings, uh, out Plano Road, we contacted, and we were able to pick up three, uh, single-family properties there. I think it actually was four parcels, but three single-family property owners. Generally, we don't have a lot of success if they're already, um, established, constructed, people living there.
I understand that. I just wonder, you know, when I served on the commission before, one of our annexation priorities was to try to create infill and not have, you know, drive through the county to get to the city. I just think a letter here would be prudent, just to let them know that they may not know that, you know, all this is going on around them.
At least make them aware, aware of the opportunity, because previously that opportunity was not available to them.
Right.
Carwell, do you have some comments tonight, sir?
So, Mr. Nash, what that does by having this large parcel adjacent to a lot of residential lots, it makes it easier for them to come in if they want to. It's going to save the Baker Foundation considerable money in fire insurance, basically, because we have the hydrants, and we've had one fire, if you'll recall, the museum. Fortunately, it's been rebuilt, and everything's fine, but, uh, we, we really value the City of Bowling Green's Fire Department.
Thank you, Mr. Carwell. We appreciate that, and we hope that people who are watching might have an interest in joining the city limits. We would be, do our best to try to make those accommodations. I know we have public comments section coming up, but I think a couple of us need to take a break.
Yeah, can I ask one more question on this item before we take a vote? Have, has the city fire department been consulted about this, about the ease or ability to, to reach these properties that we're taking in, especially as Mr. Carwell points out, that have such valuable pieces that they're within them?
Fire Department was made aware of this. Uh, this would be served by, I don't know the station number, but Westside Morgantown Road would be part of that. This is, we were already to the Jennings Mills subdivision there on Morgantown Road. This does add some distance to it. Uh, the, the major assets here would be the city landscape building, uh, which is ours. And then it's a lot of property, and then you have a single metal building there at Texas Gas, and then the Arboretum and the museum are the, the major kind of assets there. So they were consulted, they were talked about. This is something we've been working on for some time, and they were made aware about this.
The Abe Kazuki landscaping building.
And I did not attempt to say that.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, and we'll be taking a five-minute break before we get to the public comments section. Keith, how you doing? Good. Okay, we're back from our break, and we return for the public comments section. If you have, uh, information that you need, the city, uh, needs to be made aware of, this would be that opportunity. If you'll come to the microphone, and then we'll let you tell us your name and address, and we'll go from there. In for Europe.
My name is Jennifer Moreland, and I live at thirteen sixty-seven Clay Street. Okay, I want to talk about four issues. One is the, the noise ordinance, it's on my phone. I lost the sheet of paper, I don't know what happened to it, but I had it, but, um, it says that people are breaking the noise ordinance where I live, and all I want is the police to give out tickets so people can actually wake up at seven o'clock in the morning and go to work. So, I just want you to try to talk to the police officers and ask them to give out tickets instead of just giving them warning. Okay? Three, the, um, I donated bibles to the Drug Enforcement Task Force. They didn't accept it because they had bibles, believe it or not, but they do. So, um, so I would like to get more funding for the Drug Enforcement Task Force. You know, and I would like one of you city commissioners to help me find funding to give to the Drug Enforcement Task Force, because they're doing a very good job, and they need more funding. Okay? Three. Three. The police force need a fraud department, and I'm, I'm still going to fight it. Fraud department this area needs, because cops, I think it's a thousand, a thousand people, a thousand cars for fraud that happens. And it would be so much easier if you have one or two cops just for fraud. Three. Three. The police force give money to the, the small business development. Now, I would like to find funding for the small business development. They should have a room for computers and assemble part-time working for websites. So, they should have that, and that's what I'm going to do. So, three. The Fairness Act. Okay, the Fairness Act. I know that New, New Hope Church in the community, two years ago, had a guideline that they would kick out gays out of church. And the New Hope Church, somebody goes to that church.
Your time has expired, thank you very much.
Okay. But I just wanted-
Your, your time has expired. Is there anyone else that has a comment that the city commission needs to be made aware of? Name and address, please, sir?
My name is Matthew Bratcher, two forty, hand over court.
Can you push that microphone over so we can hear you? What's the name again, please?
Matthew Bratcher, two forty, hand over court. Thank you guys for, uh, allowing me to speak for a moment.
I, I didn't get your name.
Matthew Bratcher.
Matthew.
And what, what's your ad- address, Matthew, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's all right, two forty, hand over court.
Two forty, thank you, sir.
Yeah. Uh, I'll be real brief, it's been a long meeting, I'm sure you guys are ready to call on it. Um, a crucial component of reforming our nation's criminal justice system is the reform of America's cannabis laws. Over six hundred thousand Americans are arrested every year for minor cannabis possession offenses. The individuals, overwhelming young people and individuals of color, are often saddled with a lifelong criminal record, as well as the stigma and lost opportunities associated with it, such as the loss of financial, student financial aid or employment. We should not be squandering precious law enforcement and judicial resources to target these otherwise law-buying citizens. By continually to prohibit the use, production, and sale of cannabis, we are ceding control to the black market. Doing so denies states crucial tax revenue that could fund important social services and leaves cannabis production and distribution in the control of unregulated dealers who have no incentive to keep it out of the hands of our youth. If our thirteen-year experiment with alcohol prohibition in this country is deemed a failure, then how else can we define our eighty-year-long prohibition on marijuana? It is time to end this failed and morally bankrupt policy by passing a resolution in support of cannabis reform in our state legislature, specifically House Bill one six six, its companion bill in the Senate one eight, or one one eight, and SB eighty. The majority of the people of the Commonwealth in Warren County agree that it's time to legalize and regulate cannabis, and it's time for our state laws to reflect that reality. Thank you guys very much.
Is there anyone else that needed to make a statement this evening? Your name, please, sir?
Uh, Kelly Embry, one five five Tyler Drive, Smith Grove, Kentucky. As I mentioned last time, lifelong resident of Bowling Green and Warren County, and other than, uh, six years working in Barron County, I've also worked my adult life in and around Bowling Green. Uh, same resolution as last time. I won't read it verbatim, but basically, uh, in conjunction with what Mr. Bratcher was saying, uh, there's been many studies. Uh, if, if you do any research on your own, you'll quickly see that veterans, uh, the elderly, children are benefiting from medicinal marijuana. And our, uh, a- again, as Mr. Bratcher said, our citizens deserve the liberty to have that choice should they so choose to, um, seek that type of medicine for their ailments. Um, it can go beyond that, it can be, uh, simply, uh, uh, an adult use of liberty choice as well. Uh, I feel that in the very least, I would like to allow you to, I've reached out to you all via email. I've received one response, thank you Mayor Wilkerson, I hope you will reconsider, but I would like to defer my, the rest of my allotted time to allow each of you to just simply give a yea or nay if you would endorse the resolution to send.
This is an opportunity for you to bring information to us.
I as- I assume that would be the response, so I will continue. Uh, again, what we are asking is that you consider a, a simple support of consolidation of the thoughts and feelings of many of our fellow citizens here in Warren County, here in Bowling Green, and throughout the Commonwealth of Kentucky. Uh, what medicinal marijuana can do for Kentucky beyond helping sick people is put many of our farmers back to work, put many of our coal miners back to work in processing and production jobs. So it is not a simple, um, medicine issue, but a much broader issue, an economic issue, an agricultural issue, uh, and indeed a philosophical issue that's been built on propaganda that's been going on for about eighty-plus years. Uh, lies that we're told to demonize a substance that is only harmful because it is illegal. Uh, alcohol, tobacco, much har- more harmful substances that are readily available on just about every street corner. And because of the demonization and the stigma that has gone along with marijuana and cannabis, and even hemp, uh, a completely benign substance as far as quote-unquote getting high, uh, those are still obstacles that are being overcome by the citizens of the Commonwealth of Kentucky. Those same challenges have been met by citizens in other states, and they have proven that the sky has not fallen. They've shown, uh, a twenty-five percent, uh, decrease in opioid deaths in the state of Colorado alone, and a lot of that attributed to an alternative, a safer alternative with marijuana.
Your time has expired, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, and your name, please?
My name is Lauren Key, I live on thirty-eight eighty Old Nashville Road.
And you get the last name?
Lauren Key. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Um, uh, continuing with the talk track that we've had, uh, previously with Mr. Bratcher and Mr. Embry, um, I'm just here to present some facts, uh, to consider as you think about the resolution that we want to pass. Um, one of the big things that legalization can do for our economy, um, and Kentucky is in a lot of need, um, for economic growth, um, we have, we know that the legal market for adult and medical use of marijuana accounted for one hundred and forty-nine thousand three hundred and four jobs in two thousand and seventeen, a twenty-two percent increase since two thousand and sixteen. That equates to two, twenty-six thousand four hundred and ninety new jobs added over a twelve-month period. In two thousand and sixteen, Colorado alone generated over one point four billion in combined recreational and medical marijuana sales. This accounted for nearly two hundred million dollars in tax and fees revenue, which was mostly designated for new school con- construction projects in the state. The state is expected to exceed two hundred and twenty-five million dollars in tax and fees revenue for two thousand and seventeen. Oregon collected a total of one hundred and eight point six million in state and local taxes between January fourth, two thousand and sixteen, and August thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. That revenue was divided between multiple agencies and programs. The state school fund receives forty percent, or thirty-four million. Mental health, alcoholism, and drug services receive twenty percent, or seventeen million. Oregon State Police received fifteen percent, or twelve point seven five million, and the Oregon Health Authority receives five percent, or four point twenty-five million. Nevada generated three point eight million in tax and revenue in just the first month of legal recreational marijuana sales. Legal cannabis markets are estimated to reach sales of twenty-four point five billion by year twenty twenty-one. And we just want everybody to know these things so that we can look towards the future of Kentucky and, and the money that we need so badly here. So the other, uh, issue I just wanted to speak briefly on, uh, is opioid problem that we have in Kentucky. According to the Kentucky Office of Drug Control Policy, Kentucky overdose fatalities increased in two thousand and sixteen. Overdose deaths of Kentucky residents regardless of where the death occurred, and non-residents who died in Kentucky numbered one thousand four hundred and four, as reported to the Office of Vital Statistics in June of two thousand and seventeen. And that compares to twelve hundred and forty-eight overdose deaths counted in the two thousand and fifteen report. So in Warren County alone, there's been about a hundred overdose deaths in the past five years. With our nation in the midst of a serious opioid crisis, recent research has revealed that access to cannabis is one proven strategy for helping curb the, the harms caused by opioid abuse. So, some of the-
Lauren, Ms. Key, your time has expired.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that needs to bring information to the city commission?
Hello, my name is Elliot Morris, uh, five-two-five Scott Lane.
Say the name again.
Elliot Morris.
Elliot Morris?
Yes. Um, I'm here, speaking about what the last few speakers spoke about. Um, marijuana has been a part of humanity's medicine cabinet for almost as long as history has been recorded. Of all the negative consequences of marijuana prohibition, few are as tragic as the denial of medicinal cannabis to the tens of thousands of patients who would benefit from its therapeutic use. Currently, thirty states and the District of Columbia have implemented a medicinal cannabis program, and have an additional sixteen state, oh, and an additional sixteen states have enacted more limited medicinal cannabis laws for access to CBD to treat qualifying conditions such as intractable epilepsy. Modern research suggests that cannabis is a valuable aid in the treatment of a wide range of clinical applications. These include pain relief, particularly of neuropathic pain, pain from nerve damage, nausea, spasticity, and movement disorders. Marijuana is also a powerful appetite stimulant specifically for patients suffering from HIV, the AIDS-wasting syndrome, or dementia. Emerging research suggests that marijuana's medicinal properties are neuroprotective and may protect the body against some types of malignant tumors. Changes in the legal status of marijuana at the state level have not negatively impacted workplace safety. In fact, a pair of studies from two thousand and sixteen find that the legalization of marijuana, uh, the legalization of medical marijuana access is associated with greater workforce participation and with fewer workplace absences. Most recently, the National Acad- uh, Academies of Sciences just released marijuana and health report found insufficient evidence to support an association between cannabis use and occupational accidents or injuries. Currently, more than sixty U.S. and international health organizations support granting patients immediate legal access to medicinal marijuana under a physician's supervision. And that's all I've got to say, thanks so much.
Sir? Is anyone else that needs to speak to us tonight?
Casey Vogt, four-three-six Dishman Lane. And to further continue on what everyone else-
Will you tell me your last name again, Casey?
Vogt. V-O-L-K.
Thank you, sir.
And I come before you not as, you know, an advocate. I am here because, uh, I'm alive because of it. Um, I was diagnosed with stage-three blood cancer about three years ago. I've been knowingly living with it for like sixteen, now that I know the evidence. And, you know, going through all the motions of cancer, let's just wrap it up to that. By the time I started radiation, I weighed two hundred and forty-eight pounds. When I first found out I had cancer in June, I was two hundred and fifty-eight pounds. By the end of fifteen treatments of radiation, I was down forty pounds, and all their options exhausted, told me to take Insure and Tylenol. Now, I don't know about anyone, but that's just not really a good answer when I'm having a serious problem. Insure and Tylenol, well, that's just not working. By the time I made it back to my oncologist, and the numbers were so very clear, you know, something was very wrong, and this was the last option to try, is this medication, Dravinal. I don't know if anyone here is aware of what Dravinal is, but it is basically, uh, the marijuana plant pulled apart by the pharmaceutical industry to one molecule, THC with a delta-nine receptor, therefore circumventing the law to make it legal to sell. Now, when I got my prescription for it, I have no money, had no coverage for my insurance. I am like, well, I need relief. Um, five days without sleep is not fun. And calling to Sam's Club and for a small thirty-day prescription was a thousand dollars. And I thought that was going to be the cheap place. So I went to my local hometown pharmacy, and she came out to me in tears telling me the best she could do was five hundred dollars. Now, as I was a working man, I worked for another pharmacist, so I was like, well, I gotta shop around here, it's only my health. And he was able to help me out with compassion and got the ball rolling. But without this, I would not be here today. It's documented by four well-renowned physicians that on my diagnosis, they pulled the tumor out of my leg, and there is a retention zone eaten around what, if it was true, I shouldn't be standing here today.
All right, Mr. Vogt, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Someone else?
My name's Michael Gramley, my wife and I own a business on three-ten East Main Street. Two years ago, Donald Trump remarked to a crowd of supporters that he could shoot someone in broad daylight on Fifth Avenue, and that his base would not waver. On behalf of his followers, he proclaimed the right to act with impunity, to act above the law, to claim a birthright to power, to be white in America. Trump's election didn't invent racism, but it did invite racists across the nation to make America great again, and in broad daylight, to do and say exactly what they mean. In Bowling Green, two days after Martin Luther King Day, a hate crime targeting the homes of black women at the Crown Royal Apartments was committed in broad daylight. Feces smeared and a racist slur scrawled on the wall alongside the slogan, "Make America Great Again." This particular act of racial hatred has drawn the attention of the media and elicited a well-deserved condemnation from our mayor, for which we are grateful, sir. But while it is true that the slogan "Make America Great Again" may indeed be the words of a small-minded individual, as the mayor suggests, they are not the words of the perpetrators. They are among the many words and deeds originating from the high station in American leadership that have ignited the climate of hatred and violence towards people of color, refugees, immigrants, persons of the Islamic faith, and the LGBTQ community. This is not a call for impeachment of the president, nor an exhortation to support a particular party. It is a plea that even in the toxic political climate we now endure, that decent people will sit and be able to distinguish right from wrong, and to say so out loud in broad daylight. We may not be able to silence the spew of racist vitriol coming from the White House, but we can take responsibility for what comes and for what occurs in our own community. We therefore would like to ask what the commissioners are doing to address racial hatred in our community, and to strongly recommend that they take the following actions if they are not already doing so. One, a proclamation from the Board of Commissioners and the mayor that not only condemn, condemns all hate crimes, but also condemns the climate of hate that enables such crimes to occur. The Bowling Green law enforcement work with the county and WKU to create a clearinghouse by which hate speech and hate crimes can be tracked, that such information be re- made readily available to our citizens, and that perpetrators be vigorously prosecuted. After all, history teaches us that the words of small-minded individuals are often followed by violent acts that are committed by small-minded individuals. It only takes one lone wolf to rob a mother of her child, a church of its congregates. We cannot wait, we must act now. Thank you. We cannot wait, we must act now, thank you.
Anyone else that needs to make a comment? Any other comments?
I'm going to speak tonight, my name's Allison Dorsey, I live at eight-hundred Horseshoe Bend Road in Scottsville. Um, I'm a Western graduate, and I've lived in Bowling Green different times in my life, and I came in tonight just to look at leadership. It's fun to watch the, the council and see what you guys are up to and how you go about it, but if we don't stand up against racism, if we don't have a stand, uh, when these kinds of things happen in our town, and we're not very public about it, then it just gives it permission to keep on going, and I am one white person here to say that that's not okay with me, so I hope that you guys can pr- provide leadership. I'm so excited that the mayor had, has made a statement, so maybe you can make a collective statement.
Seeing no one else, we'll close the meeting, oop, I'm sorry, Francisco, did you have a comment?
I'm eager to get out of here, I'll make it quick. Uh, my, my name is Francisco Serrano, I reside at five-seventy-two Moss Creek Avenue. Um, last time I was here, I spoke about my own experience with, uh, hate crimes, and, uh, I can tell you again, you know, these things are not fun. Um, it, it's a, it's a shot at, at your own identity, um, and you feel it throughout your whole body, and it really has you questioning if you really belong to this community, if you belong to this country. Having a collective voice from the city commission, uh, would mean the world, not only to me, but to other people who have experienced hate crimes as well. Um, just alone, in Bowling Green, uh, in two thousand and sixteen, there were eleven hate crimes committed, six on race, two on religion, and three, uh, on sexual orientation. I know that we already have agencies that are set up by the city that, uh, are designed to combat this type of hate, like the Bowling Green Human Rights Commission and, uh, our police departments that do amazing work, but it is only with the strong unified voice that we can, uh, further combat hate, uh, hate that is attempting to take over our city, uh, and that is surely not welcome here, and surely not what we're about. I know the twenty-three years that I've lived here in the city, uh, I, I, I know in my heart that that's not who we are, and I know every single one of you in this room know that, that, that is not who we are, and, uh, I also wanted to echo, um, everyone else that has been thanking the mayor for coming out and speaking against that. Uh, again, our hopes today is to get, um, a further collective voice from the city commission, to further, further dissuade people from committing these, these acts of hate, and that they won't be tolerated in our city. Thank you.
I'll keep this brief as well, I know that, my name is Toby Fatsinger, I live at ten-thirty-five Kentucky Street, and run a business here in Bowling Green as well. Um, wanna thank, and wanna reiterate, um, what my friends and neighbors have said. Um, I, uh, I'm really appreciative of the city commission and the mayor for condemning this hateful act that happened at the Crown Apartments. Um, we are here today really just asking for some acknowledgement that this is an issue, and it's a growing trend here in Bowling Green and across the country. We believe in our local government, we believe in our law enforcement, we would like to work closely with those as neighbors. I don't, I don't speak for everybody, I speak for myself, um, but I certainly know that, um, us being here today and the forty-five signatures that you have on the proclamation in front of you indicate that there is consensus on this issue. Um, we believe that you're acting, uh, with due diligence to combat these things, we encourage a, um, transparency, um, between our local government and, uh, our residents, so that we know exactly how this is being handled, so that we can resist this culture of fear that we're all kind of thrust into these days. Thank you very much for being here tonight.
Okay, is anyone else? All right, thank you, then just a reminder that our next meeting is scheduled for March sixth, two thousand and eighteen. Jennifer, would you sit down just a minute, I'm not done. Now that we're at the end of our meeting, it's not quite the end of his term, but it's the end of the last time he'll see us here. Gonna miss your brother, thank you for what you've done for us.
Nice to have you, Bernie.
Thank you, Kevin, very much.